Okay, it is 7:02 and I'm going to reconvene to the regular meeting in open session, the Indian Prairie District 204 Board on August 14th, 2017. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Raisak.
Here.
Mr. Carrubas.
Here.
Ms. Peel.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Demme.
Here.
And, Mr. Carrubas, could you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we go to board salutes, and I'm gonna start with Ms. Demme.
Wabonzi Valley's LMC Director awarded the John Alaska Distinguished Dissertation Award. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley's LMC Director, Dr. Kristin Mattson, who recently received the John Alaska Distinguished Dissertation Award from the American Association for Teaching and Curriculum. Dr. Mattson was honored for her dissertation titled, "Moving Beyond Personal Responsibility: A Critical Discourse Analysis of Digital Citizenship Curricula." Congratulations, Dr. Mattson, on this stellar achievement.
Thank you, Susan Mark. The board salutes Niqua Valley Athletic Director Brandon Atkins for being recognized by the National, not the Illinois, the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association as a Certified Master Athletic Administrator. To earn this distinction, Brandon has demonstrated exemplary knowledge, contribution, and ongoing professional development in the field of interscholactic athletic administration. The voluntary certification process included a thorough evaluation of Brandon's educational background, coursework, and professional contributions. Brandon is one of a very elite group nationwide to attain this level of professionalism. Congratulations, Brandon. Thank you.
The board salutes several District 204 athletes who recently participated in the Illinois Special Olympics 2017 Summer Games. From the alumni Eagles team, gold medals were awarded to Mark Jerabeck in the 800-meter run and Grace Seebolt in the 100-meter freestyle. From the high school teams, gold medals were awarded to Matia Valley's Umar Chohan, Kirsten Dolnig, and Ethan Gallenbach. Niqua Valley First Place Awards went to Amiri Coleman and Ryan Hee. And from Wabonzi Valley, Jack Etlig and Jamari Wagner. At the middle school level, Lauren Boston and Charlie Dickerson won gold. And District 204 also had a 25-meter relay team that won a gold medal. Members of the relay team were Amiri Coleman, Ryan Hee, Spencer Hee, and Jack Mayer. The district was well-represented at the games, and we congratulate all the participants on their outstanding achievements.
Thank you. Mr. Carrubas?
The board salutes Charles Bibbs, Yvette Dubiel, Darrell Echols, and Bob McBride on being honored as educators excelling in our community by the DuPage AME Church. These individuals were selected for their dedication to the field of education and being positive community role models. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The board salutes Niqua Valley Junior Raziki Covington, who was awarded a gold medal in the Earth and Space Science category at the 39th Annual Afro-Academics, Culture, Technology, and Scientific Olympics. Congratulations, Raziki, on this national award.
The board salutes Niqua Valley's Akash Basu and Wabonzi Valley's Ashna Shah on being awarded college-sponsored scholarships by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. The award provides between 500 and 2,000 annually for up to four years of undergraduate study. Akash Basu will attend Vanderbilt University in the field of neuroscience, and Ashna Shah will attend Case Western Reserve University in the field of medicine. Congratulations to Akash and Ashna on your awards.
Thank you so much. We're gonna move now to public comment. I'm gonna read the revised public comment statement. Mr. Padron, you can move to the podium if you'd like as I'm reading this. It is now time for public comment for non-agenda items. If you are here to speak to an agenda item, that comment will be taken immediately prior to that item. Thirty minutes is allowed for public comment, and each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups. And as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep the comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by administrator as appropriate. Mr. Padron.
Complaint number six, Amrex, which is a District 204 gas consultant. I requested a response from Amrex of the three companies who submitted pricing for the natural gas contract per the May 18th, 2017 bid summary. Per the FOIA response, Amrex has communicated to us they do not have any responsive records to this request. Here's their response. There's three companies that put responses on there for pricing. If this is true, where did Amrex get the price quotes from? Per Todd DePaul letter attached to Dr. Sullivan and the Board of Ed, it clearly states it is Amrex recommendation that we accept the proposal submitted on May 18th by Constellation. Why did Mr. DePaul not insist on having those written proposals attached with his recommendation letter? It covers everybody's butt, and now this has opened up for very suspicious behavior. Why did Superintendent Karen Sullivan or the Board of Ed require those documents be attached for verification? This is basic 101 accounting. Despite my request to table the approval of this contract at the June 12th board meeting, not one person commented on it to discuss the contract ratification. As you know, I have a background in this area, and evidently the superintendent has no intention of responding or discuss the other violations I have brought to your attention. The July Board of Ed meeting, there was a presentation leading to a referendum in the near future. This means property tax increases to support school spending. I suggest, Dr. Sullivan, that you demand that you get your house in order before you pursue a referendum. I have uncovered many an issue, and it appears, from my viewpoint, because there's no response, this is one big cover-up. I am requesting that Dr. Sullivan, please, demand that Amrex release those pricing responses and emails. This is not the Hillary Clinton scandal. Millions of dollars have been spent on gas, and Amrex is benefiting from their commission in awarding this contract to Constellation for the past 10 years. As a result, more FOIAs are necessary to get answers on this scandalous subject. More to come on this one here, and I don't know why you avoid responding to this, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jennifer McGill.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi. I'm speaking on behalf of my son Clayton. He's 20 years old, and he is supposed to be attending STEPS next year. He attended last year. He will not be returning. He begged me not to send him back there when he found out that he wasn't gonna be with his best friend anymore. His one friend got sent to one school, he got sent to another. You know, nobody asked us anything. I don't know what the parameters. Somebody deemed him low-functioning. Without, I've heard that, you know, nobody spoke to the kids. They looked at some test scores. I called the district to request, you know, find out something. You know, in the letter, it gave us a phone number and, you know, hey, you know, we're here for questions. And I called, and I wanted to know, you know, hey, is there anything we can do? Are we making any exceptions? This kid, you know, he's got one friend in the whole world, and now, you know, he already didn't like STEPS that much. Now he's going to a completely different school than, you know, he attended for his home school, and he's not gonna be with his friends. Nobody got back to me. So, you know, there's a lot of us out there, and I was asked to speak because, you know, I'm not the type of person that's gonna come. And, you know, I've been fighting and fighting and fighting his whole life. We have to fight for everything for these kids. You know, they don't have the voice. We're their voice. We are the only ones that care enough. And to be honest, he's 20 years old. I'm tired of fighting. I'm tired of putting my other kids on the back burner. I'm exhausted. I work, you know, I never get to see my husband because one of us always has to be with him, you know. So, we pretty much lead separate lives. You know, and I stopped fighting junior high. You know, I think you have a phenomenal preschool program for special needs. It's phenomenal. It's amazing. Grade school, again, wonderful. In junior high, things start to break down. For us, and for, you know, I'm in with the community of the special needs moms. We all, this is something that's well-known. It's well-known among the district. And, you know, high school's okay, STEPS, not so much. I think it's time that you guys look at this program, and not just, you know, like, what's happening this year is really upsetting to the kids that are in it right now. And it's not fair. You know, they're the ones that are kind of getting dumped on. But, really, that whole program needs to get looked at because it's not appropriate for everybody. It's very inappropriate for my son. And every time I've called, you know, there's this big planning thing, and then nothing ever gets done. It's, and it's because it's too hard. There's too many kids with too many different needs. All, you know, we're trying to shove them through the same hole. And I know, you know, there's this other set of kids that's doing something else and all that, but, you know, I ask them...
I'm sorry, your three minutes is up, so if you would like a concluding sentence?
Okay, so, in conclusion, I would ask that, you know, you keep the kids together, at least these kids for now, and find a better place for them. The schools are overcrowded, we all know that. And, you know, that maybe look at the whole program, and it's time to revamp. We're gonna have a lot of kids with autism and special needs coming up.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Our next speaker is Jeff Gross.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Gross, and I'm a longtime resident of District 204. Currently, I'm here to speak to you tonight on behalf of Boy Scouts, of which I'm an adult volunteer, serve as the district chair. So, Mike, I guess we sort of be in the same position there. So, first of all, I want to thank you for the wonderful education my two boys have had. They've only gone on to be, earn their doctorates, one in aerospace and one in political science. So, you guys have done a great job for us. Thank you. So anyways, talking about Boy Scouts, I want to just give you a little background on Boy Scouts. So, the mission of Boy Scouts is to prepare young people to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the Scout oath and law. And we do this through a character development program. So, since its origin, the scouting program has been an educational experience concerned with values. In 1910, the first activities for scouts were designed to build character, physical fitness, practical skills, and service. These elements were part of the original Cub Scout program and continue to be part of Cub scouting today. Character development should extend to every aspect of a boy's life. Character development should also extend to every aspect of the Cub scouting program. And Cub Scout leaders should strive to use the 12 points of the Scout law through all elements of the program. They do this via service projects, ceremonies, games, skits, songs, crafts, and all other types of activities that can be enjoyed by the families. So, how do our parents get involved with the scouting program? Well, they're all volunteer leaders like myself. And we work with the boys and their families to improve the communities by enriching the lives of the families who live there. The Cub Scout leaders support the family. They take an active part in helping to strengthen families in their parts by providing a fun-filled, worthwhile program that teaches values. I know you, as a board, value this because I saw back in June you had 360U services talking about a lot of these same topics. So, we have quite a bit of involvement in scouts. We are represented at every elementary school with a PAC, and we have over 1,000 boys and parents at the elementary level. And then they go to the Boy Scout program. We're at the middle and high school level. We also have over 1,000 boys and adults serving. Finally, I want to let you know the Boy Scouts has created a new award, and it's to be given out to a member of the school community. This could be a staff member, an educator, administrator. And it's called the Albert K. Fretwell Award. It was just created last year. I just learned about it. So, I'd like to work with someone in administration to see about implementing that so we could provide some recognition to anyone in the school district who, at each elementary school, who supports scouting and does something outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Absolutely.
Karen, can you help with that?
Thanks, Jeff.
Jeff, you can send me that information.
Karen? Okay, will do.
Thank you. That's the end of our community input. And we're now going to move to the superintendent report and the consent agenda. Dr. Sullivan?
Okay, well, the drama continues in Springfield in terms of school funding. And for the first time in Illinois history, school districts were not paid their first general state aid payment, which was due August 10th. Yesterday, the Senate voted to override the Governor's Amendmentary Veto of Senate Bill 1. And we have looked at the Governor's Amendmentary Veto. We can't support that, even though we gain more dollars initially than we do in SB 1. In the Governor's bill, this increase is only temporary, and we would go off a funding cliff in 2020. So, the House now has 15 days to override the veto or the bill dies, Senate Bill 1 dies. The Senate also put House Bill 3163 into play, and that bill could be used as a new vehicle for school funding reform if SB 1 dies. So, no school district in the state can receive general state aid until an evidence-based funding formula is agreed upon. So, we, again, as we've been doing for a very long time, urge our legislators to work together to find a way to come to consensus on a funding formula. While Indian Prairie can stay open without those payments coming in immediately, there are other districts throughout the state that cannot stay open very long. And this is on top of a reminder that all districts are still owed money from the state for last year's bills, including us. We're still waiting for $5.6 million from last year. So, again, we urge our elected officials to get together and figure this out. We are in full back-to-school mode. Tomorrow, we are set to welcome just over 100 new teachers and staff to the district, and we'll spend the next three days acclimating them to District 204. On Wednesday of this week, we're holding our annual kindergarten preview day from 9:00 to 12:00 in the morning, and then from 1:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon at Still Middle School. So, we hope that our parents of incoming kindergarteners will come in and stop by with the various booths, and lots of people there ready to answer questions that they might have about riding the bus, getting their ID picture taken, food service, our Safe and Sound Program. So, we encourage all of our kindergarten families to attend. And then on Monday of next week, all teachers report back to their individual building institute, and on Tuesday is our district-wide institute. So, I look forward to welcoming everyone on Tuesday as I make my way around to the three different high schools where our teachers are meeting to speak briefly, and we'll honor our staff members for their 20, 25, 30, and 35 years of service to the district. And then on Thursday, the doors open, the bells ring, and all of our kids come back for the school year already. Ready to go. Just a couple other items of note. We provided our public the 2016-17 evaluation for the John C. Dunham STEM Partnership School. It's up on Board Docs. It's also posted on the school's website, but we wanted to announce it publicly that it was available so that those who are interested can take a look at it. And finally, the 2018 Niche Ratings of the top school districts in the state were recently released, and we were pleased to see Indian Prairie ranked as the sixth-best school district in the state. We received an A-plus rating, which we're very proud of, and we know that strong public schools are very critical to maintaining a strong community. And we know we want to continue to hold that rating. So, that's it.
Great, thank you. Now I'm gonna move to the consent agenda, and I need a motion that the board approve consent agenda items D through I.
Make a motion, the board approve consent agenda items D through I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Raisak?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Okay. Now we go to our action items. And earlier this evening at 5:00, the Board of Education met to discuss development of a charge to the community in regards to a community engagement activity. As we met with people and met with consultants, they told us pretty much what we knew. If we want to engage the community, we need to ask them the appropriate questions so we get the appropriate information. So, we kind of worked through this and wordsmithed through this for about an hour and 15 minutes. And I think we're at the point now that we want to review this and then approve it for consideration. So, I'm gonna go through this, and I don't know if it's necessary that I read it all, but I do feel it's important to read most of it. So...
Into the mic.
With our community engagement program, it's important that we set a foundation for our community. And our board feels that foundation is with our mission statement and guiding principles. So, as a foundational statement, we began with our mission and guiding principles. And then we went on to say, "The Indian Prairie School District Board of Education recognized the mission cannot be fully achieved without a comprehensive plan for improving the overall performance of the district." The board further recognizes, as stated in the district's guiding principle, that community collaboration is a critical component of the district mission statement, and successful development and implementation of this plan requires extensive community involvement and participation. So, therefore, in order to build an ongoing process for strengthening communication and collaborative efforts with the community, to find priorities and steps to determine the future health and welfare of the district, to obtain relevant perspectives that build upon, expand, and enhance the previous planning initiatives by the district, to assist the board in hearing and understanding the community's educational beliefs, aspirations, desires, and priorities, to provide a basis for reaching conclusions on issues concerning educational program, facilities, and resource allocation, and to involve the community in planning for the future of the Indian Prairie School District, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the formation of a broad-based coalition of community members and staff. The charge of this group is to make recommendations to the Board of Education regarding the comprehensive plan for improving the performance of the district. To accomplish the goal, the group should focus on the following areas: current, accurate, and consistent information that reflects the broad base of community perceptions and priorities; the community's understanding of the role, objectives, accomplishment, resources, and needs of the district; priorities and goal for the district; and how should the district reach those priorities and goals? We hope upon completion of this process, this group should make recommendations no later than July 31st, 2018, regarding the improvement of Indian Prairie School District and the development of an ongoing model for district-community collaboration and communication. So, that was pretty much the basis of our work. If we are going to move forward, I need a motion to approve this charge.
So moved.
I have a...
Second?
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve...
I'm sorry, motion was luring?
Yes.
Okay, and the second? Thank you.
Any discussion? Anybody want to comment on the process? Hearing none, I guess we move on. Jackie?
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Mr. Raisak?
Aye. Next. Since we have a charge that is written and now approved, we have to go to the next step, and that is the hiring of a consultant to assist us in this process. So, do I have a motion to approve the 2017-18 contract with Unicom ARC as presented?
I move that we approve the Unicom contract as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion with this? Hearing none, Jackie, can you call the roll?
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Excuse me. Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Raisak?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Our next agenda item is the approval of the 2016-17 Gifts and Donations Report.
Need a motion?
Yes, can I have a motion?
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the 16-17 Gifts and Donations Report as presented.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, Bora?
Good evening, Board members of the Board. The Teaching and Learning Department first would like to publicly express our gratitude for all of the generosity of our community, the Indian Prairie Education Foundation, our PTAs. We are asking the board to accept these gifts and donations, which have a grand total of $1,329,674. So, we could not do many of the things in our schools without this great community support.
Comments, questions?
No, I mean, I just, I'd like to thank our community, our teachers, our staff, the families that continuously give of their time and their donations. You know, it's evidenced when you're out in the community and see the involvement between our kids, our parents, and our staff. What a wonderful district we have, and this is testament to it. So, I'm sure all of us can thank everybody, you know.
Seems like an old statement that it takes a community to raise a child, but it fits here. I was basically overwhelmed and a bit emotional after reviewing, I don't know, 118...
118 pages.
118 pages...
That would be a great idea.
...of donations and assistance, you know, that has been provided to our schools and to our children in order for them to succeed. And that's what I think makes Indian Prairie District 204 great. So, on behalf of myself and I'm sure of the entire board, you know, thank you. Anybody else? Jackie, can you call the roll?
Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Mr. Raisak?
Aye.
Mr. Carrubas?
Yes.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Motion passes. And now we move to the ever-popular approval of the 2017-18 tentative budget as we know it.
Good evening, Board members. Yes, this is the time of year when we approve a tentative budget, and a month from now we'll approve it. But it's safe to say, um, our spending plan will look nothing like what you're going to see tonight. And as more information comes out of Springfield, we'll amend the budget and return back to the Board for further approvals. But tonight I'd like to talk about the state funding for fiscal year 2018, Senate Bill I, and some of the items that are in the amendatory veto, our tentative budget, and then our next steps, which by law you're required to pass this today. We'll post it for 30 days on the website, and we've got a, a note to go in the newspapers letting folks know that the budget's available for viewing, and then we'll come back in the, um, late September for passing the budget. So, as you know, the spending plan that came out of the state budget requires an evidence-based funding model to fund schools, and at this particular point in time, there is no evidence-based funding bill that's passed and will allow us to fund schools. There is Senate Bill I, which passed both chambers of the Houses, and went to the Governor for an amendatory veto. That veto went back to the Senate, and on Saturday, the Senate overrode that veto, and in 15 days now, the House has to act on that, which takes it to, I think, about August 28th. I understand that there's a shell bill that's out there that may be a secondary life raft that if this falls apart, they can put something together and they can start funding schools. As Dr. Sullivan mentioned, the state owes us $5.6 million in mandated categoricals, and Mr. Carubus asked the question today, did that include the late general state aid payment that we haven't received yet? And it did not, so that's another million dollars that we have not received from the state of Illinois. Some of the differences between Senate Bill I and what the Governor amended is that there's no protection now for pension cost shifts. And in Senate Bill I, pension payments, if they were to go to the district, would be a part of that spending plan and be a part of that formula. It would be an expense for doing business. With the Governor's amendatory veto, that no longer is the case. So if the Tier III retirement plan was to occur in our district, and there was a number of people who decided to take that, the cost of paying for those pensions in the Governor's plan would not be a part of our normal cost to do business. Anybody who's in Tier II who just elected to take that, and if there was any pension cost shift to school districts for the Tier I or Tier II individuals, that would no longer be a cost of us to do business. So that's a, a pretty healthy expense that the veto does not recognize. The other piece that the amendatory veto does not take into consideration is the adjusted salaries for inflation. So, our current funding and adequacy target is based on our fiscal year 2017 salaries. There's no increase built into the Governor's veto for salaries going forward. So in 2027, the cost to do business with salaries would be the cost that we have today in fiscal year 2017, and we all know that salaries are going to go up. So there's two places now where we're going to have expenses that are not going to be a part of that funding formula. The regionalization was dropped. That's that it costs more to do business in the Cawall Counties than it does Central and Southern Illinois, and that impacted all of the districts around us, Cook, DeKalb, DuPage, Grundy, Kane, Kendall, Lake, McCenry, and Will. So all of those districts now who are paying for teachers and paying for higher salaries to employ the best folks that we can possibly get, the amendatory veto makes it more like it's a central Illinois salary instead of a northern Illinois, Cawall County salary. So those are some things with the Governor's plan that negatively would impact our school Another components of it is that, as you know, through the property tax extension limitation law, we cannot access all of the property values in our district. PTEL holds us to the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, whichever is larger, and it's always been the Consumer Price Index. In addition to that, TIF districts, Tax Incremental Financing districts, those are districts where the, the tax dollars are used to stimulate that economy in that district and to build the infrastructures and get some businesses rolling. Districts, school districts do not receive that money. In Senate Bill I, TIF districts and PTEL districts were not counted because you can't get that money. In the Governor's amendatory veto, he counts that as real property and real wealth for a school district, so it automatic, artificially inflates what we have for real money in our school district. So again, that negatively impacts us as a school district. Another component of it is that there's a base funding minimum that the law, evidence-based Senate Bill I put into place, and the way the base funding minimum worked was that every year you would start from a new starting point, and that would become your new base funding minimum, so you would never lose money. So for the beginning of the year, fiscal year 18, our base funding minimum would be what we received in fiscal year 17. In the amendatory veto, there is no base funding minimum. And if the base funding minimum is, well, there is a base funding minimum, if the base funding minimum isn't met, the money is distributed equally against all four tiers of the Tier I, Tier II, Tier III, Tier IV of school districts, depending upon their wealth. In Senate Bill I, if the base funding minimum isn't met, the majority of the dollars go to Tier I, because the goal of Senate Bill I was to bring Tier I schools, the poorest schools, up to closer to Tier II, and then to move Tier II up closer to Tier III. So that artificially hurts the lower schools, and the money will get distributed across school districts in Tier II, Tier III, and Tier IV, who would appear to have more money. The other difficult component, and Dr. Sullivan mentioned on, about this earlier, and that is that in 2021, your base funding minimum would not be determined by the previous year, but by your student population. And as you know, our population's been dropping, and so in 2021, we would start to receive our money in the amendatory veto based on the number of students that we would have in our school district. Senate Bill I, and the way that the calculations modeled, if your population is dropping, that's worked into the formula. So you would see the impact through the formula and not through a complete reduction in per Finally, it removes the $203 million for the CPS block grant, and that would get distributed across all school districts, both Tier I, Tier II, Tier III, and Tier IV. And it does not take into consideration that the city of Chicago would be paying for the unfunded liability of their pension system. So all of the contributions that the city of Chicago makes towards those pension systems, much like some of the impact to us, would not be calculated in their adequacy target. So that's a pretty substantial payment that they're making it into the pension system and they're not putting towards classrooms. The amendatory veto does not take that into consideration. In addition to that, any future pension contributions by the city of Chicago would not be calculated into their cost of doing business, so that impacts them quite a bit as well. That takes us to the budget that we have at this particular point in time, and this is the same budget that the Board of Education looked at a month ago when we were talking about draft fiscal year 18 budget. All of the state sources are based off of the old funding formula, so the $39,519 in revenue is based off of the foundation formula. It is not based off an evidence-based formula, and that's the dollar amount right there that we're kind of hung up on, that, that we don't know about, and at some point in time, it's, at some point during the fall, I would hope that there's a evidence-based model, and we have a clearer picture of what our state funding will be. We've got $321,754,080 in total revenue. Our total expenditures are $325,139,930. We're going to be running a deficit of $3.6 million. And as you know, because of our student population dropping and because of our property values going up, under the old formula, our state sources were decreasing, and it looks going forward that those deficits or reductions are going to need to take place in order for us to have a balanced budget. I'm hoping whatever happens in Springfield puts us in a better position. It leaves us with a 29.9% fund balance to revenue ratio for this year. Now, this is what we'll post on the district's website. This is what I'll bring back to the Board to approve in September, but as I said before, it's, this cannot be our spending plan because the state budget requires it, us to be funded through evidence-based funding model and not through a foundation formula model. Our non-operating funds is the same that the Board of Education looked at again in the draft budget. We've got a total of $32,526,969 in projected revenue and $29,186,552 in expenditures. We've got the remaining money of the air conditioning, which Todd is finalizing this month. In addition to that, I've built in the payment of our debt certificates and put that on the Board planning calendar for January, so I hope that, you know, in January, I can come to the Board and make the recommendation that we pay off our two debt certificates. This is our debt service, the payment for our buildings, our debt certificates, and our construction of our air conditioning at this point in time. As I said before, this is a time for the Board to really act on this. This would normally be the time when we feel pretty confident about our budget and our spending plan, and would begin thinking about the levy, but that's not the case. At the September 18th Board of Education meeting, we'll have a budget hearing and ask the Board for final approval of this budget. And again, I hope that by November or December, we know what's happening in Springfield, and we can amend this with the true dollars that we'll receive there. So with that, I'll take questions from the Board of Education.
Before we take questions, can I have a motion, please, in a second, and then we can ask questions?
Make a motion, Board of Education approve the 2017-18 tentative budget as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'm not a financial guy, but looking at this, I think something to consider is maybe leading with page six. Because you jump right into the weeds on where the law is and some of the assumptions. I think maybe it's, from a general digesting standpoint, budget presentation, tell me what the budget is, and then build it up, how do we get there? That would, I would digest that better. I'm not sure how everybody feels about that. Looking at page six, we're getting $39 million in state resources approximately on a $320 million budget, so that's about 8% of our revenue. So our budget is plus or minus 8%.
Correct.
And why are we doing it at this time? Fiscal year starts July 1st for this school year, and Illinois law, our Board policy requires that we do this in August. The state hasn't gotten its act together until, told the school districts what its contribution to public education is going to be for this year. And we have schools starting very shortly. It's not just our district that's impacted on this, it's all districts in Illinois. Some have more or less, greater or less of an impact of state contribution to their budget. Do we need, we're running a deficit this year. Do we need to do a deficit reduction plan?
Um, no, we won't be able to, need to do a deficit reduction plan this year. Next year, it's likely that we will, though.
Thank you.
The, can, can I just mention, we've moved the budget into August because we've always waited for the state of Illinois to make its final decisions, so we knew what we were working on, and then September, so we've really were into the, deep into the first quarter of the year before we passed the budget. I would have no problem doing a budget earlier if the Board was okay amending it later, because we could put a budget together for May, and a tentative budget in May, and a budget approval in June, because pushing it off, it, it still doesn't matter. We still don't know what's going on with the state of Illinois.
Not to be flip, at least we approve a budget.
But I, I, if it, if it doesn't, if there aren't things that would prevent us from, from seeing a tentative budget in May, I, I think that might be a consideration if, you know, May or August, we still are going to have to wait. I, I would like to see it, just personally, I think it would be great to have it closer to the timeframe when it's supposed to begin.
With the state of Illinois, there's just likely to be some more assumptions built into that budget. Hopefully not, but we've got quite a few right now.
And we do, we do a draft budget, and then a tentative budget, and a final budget, so we're starting, we're starting to see some of the numbers come together, because some of them are more certain, certain than others.
As long as I can remember, it's always been presented in August for the September vote. When's the last time that we did bring it in May, do you know?
Not as long as I've been in the central office.
We did see a draft, though.
Yes. Comments, others?
Jay, I was just, why, why did you choose to use the foundational, foundation? I mean, just because that's the way we've always done it, so that was the reason why you?
That's everything we built our forecast off of.
Okay.
And at the point in time when we were putting it together, there wasn't a state budget that required an evidence-based funding model, so it's all we had at that point in time.
Okay. I'm, the per pupil funding difference, well, can you explain that? And, because I have just a very, just intuitive kind of understanding that, you know, when you reduce funding per pupil complete the way it is now, it's really hard for a district to react to that. We can't immediately close a school in the middle of planning for the school year. So could you kind of go into that a little bit, about the differences with the evidence-based funding formula and the way it currently is?
So in Senate Bill I, the prior year is your base funding minimum, so what we received in '17 is what we'd receive in '18. And then any additional monies would go on top of that, starting with Tier I and then Tier II, which is, would be our district, Tier III, and then Tier IV. And now that new money becomes your new base funding minimum for fiscal year 19, so it continues to grow. The evidence-based funding model and the calculation takes into consideration the loss of students that you would receive, and then the loss of teachers that you would need associated with that and the rest of the budget. In the amendatory veto, so it's, it's baked into the formula in one side, in the amendatory veto, what happens then is that in 20, fiscal year 20, 20, 20, 21, that dollar amount now is dependent upon the number of students in you, so in your district, so they would take the amount per student and take that away from you. So in addition to the formula, you'd get hit with it on, on that side.
So it's getting a double whammy kind of thing?
Yes.
Other comments, questions? Hearing none, Jackie, can you call the roll?
Maybe. Yeah, well, just make a note. Mr. Rising?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Demme?
Aye.
Mr. Resack?
Aye.
Ms. Peel?
Aye.
Mr. Carubus?
Yes.
Ms. Donahue?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Strange. Thank you, Mr. Strange. We now are moving to our discussion portion of our agenda, and we have a technology update. And a motion passed on that.
Good evening, board members. We are pleased to be here this evening. In several past presentations, we have discussed new ideas or initiatives regarding our efforts to best prepare our students for the future and address the operational needs of the district through a tech-related lens. In contrast to the past, when we've introduced new ideas or initiatives, this evening is more about providing an update to previously introduced topics, including our district's one-to-one initiative. As we progress, please feel free to ask questions at any time during the presentation. And for our newest board members and members of the community, we'll start with our team members introducing themselves.
Andrew Peterman, Assistant Director of Technology Services.
Stan Grabatkin, Assistant Superintendent Tech Services and Chief Technology Officer.
Al Devanport, Director of Instructional Leadership and Innovation.
Kent Anafu, Network Server and Telecom Coordinator.
Brian Grinstad, System Support Coordinator.
Can please share the acronym for your team?
Never Any Servers Available.
Or NASA.
Is that your bowling league, too?
So as we move ahead, we always, as busy as we are and as forward-thinking as we try to be, we always try to take a few moments and pause about the past year so we can reflect on where we are with our initiatives and learn from how things went or didn't go. So this slide is about the areas of emphasis we put up last year. So what I simply did was I pasted them into a slide. And the first section with the checkmark are milestones or tasks that we needed to accomplish. So yes, we implemented the middle school, district-wide, all sixty-seven hundred. Yes, we did the high school pilot, which Al and I talked about at various times last year. New iterations of online assessments, Phase Two of staff laptops and training and whatnot. The ITL-sized blue, things are noted as ongoing, not because we didn't work on them, but the nature of those initiatives are there, continuing to evolve, they're not checked off the list. So just differentiate it between the two. So, for example, we're always working on strategies to address the technology gap and help ensure that maybe some of our students and families that don't have the resources are being provided and have access to those resources. Google Apps for Education continuing to evolve and so forth. So this is just a little bit of our reflection, and as we put together this presentation, it generated outstanding dialogue among our team and others at the CUC we work with to pause and reflect and help inform how to move ahead. So this slide should look familiar to those of you that have been part of past presentations with a couple changes. We've updated this slide, and in the red text, I wanted to note, just provide a little more detail of something we talked about mid-year in our January presentation. We're very excited with the collaboration of Kathy Pease and her department and Laura Johnston and the elementary folks. We're really excited. We took feedback from our earlier pilots, and Mr. Rezak, you had asked a question related to this about how do you do a pilot that helps prepare to get buy-in from the whole district? So we mentioned this in January, but just to kind of reaffirm, our elementary pilot is going to include one grade level from each of our elementary schools, from grades two through five. So what that allows us to do is to collect feedback from the different grade levels and the celebrations and challenges. But it also has us getting that, kind of socializing the idea and getting that exposure district-wide. And this is a little bit different. When we did the middle school pilot a few years ago, we weren't sure if we wanted to shift from BYOT to the consistent one-to-one. Now we know we want to do that. So this is more about what do we learn from this pilot and how do we get buy-in district-wide? And the elementary schools, in contrast to the high schools, which I'll talk about in a minute, the elementary schools will be handing these out at their grade levels. A few weeks into the school year, like we did with the middle school, after the kids get settled in and parents are in schools and whatnot. In contrast to the high school, which started during their readiness days today, and I think we heard that Miqua handed out just about a thousand today.
Nine hundred fifty-one.
Yeah, I knew the exact number. And the other schools as well. So that's off and rolling. Our next slide, our next two slides are very important to us. When we presented in January, we talked a little bit about feedback from some of our groups, but we, you know, our, our teachers in that particular presentation. We also said that we wanted to wait till the year of the end to take some snapshots of student feedback. So Al and myself and Brad Hillman, with some input from others, put together a very short survey, and the principals did an outstanding job of getting a great response during a very busy time. So basically, this slide really confirms something that we saw from our management tools. And I'd like to make the note that the questions were asked all the way through our technology initiatives. How are, you know, at some, well, I think we've got better about not asking this question. But the questions like, well, how are we going to ensure that all the teachers are using this? And how are we going to ensure that? And what's the consistency going to be? And we've made, taken the position that we recognize that this is one of many tools. We want to provide staff development for the teachers, but we don't want to say you have to use it this much or you have to use it that way. We don't want to have to tell our great professional staff that they have to do something. We want to provide those resources and let them use those resources in a large context. So this feedback came from the kids without someone telling the kids that they had to use them in all these classes universally, okay? So the first, these two slides really, or these graphs speak for themselves. We wanted to get a snapshot over the entire year, but we also wanted to get a snapshot over a, more of a defining period. And this is from the kids, and it speaks for itself. I think it's kind of neat for us to hear through this and anecdotally that kids are using their Chromebooks in, beyond the core classes.
So as I was reviewing this, an obscure question came to me, but being an old school administrator, I had to have it nevertheless. The students say that their organization of assignments and school-related information eighty-one percent of the time.
All right, we're going to move, you want to move on to the next slide then, Mike? I was...
Were you there? Okay.
We were still on this one. But anyway, we can move on. But on this slide, this one was basically about the use and it talks about the number of classes in which the Chromebooks were being used. So when a number of kids say they're using them in most or all their classes, what's that, what that is telling us, and it kind of goes along with the use we've seen from our management tools at times of the day, that the kids are using these for a lot of different skills in some classes that some folks would assume they wouldn't be used. Okay? So we, that was a kind of a positive takeaway for us.
Yeah, this is really positive. So did you get any anecdotal information from the teachers on this in terms of homework completion? You know, middle school and homework completion is always one of the biggest challenges of middle school life. So was there any feedback whatsoever that said this was more assistive and in fact, I see a little bit better completion as a result of utilizing the device versus the traditional method? Or no information yet?
Go ahead, Al.
Yeah, I think definitely, you know, one of the great things about Google Apps for Education and Google Docs or Google Classroom, which is what most of our staff is using to kind of manage that workflow. You know, back, Mike, when you were administrator, you know, if a kid didn't turn it in on paper, or if he did, if the teacher didn't have it or the kid didn't have it, the common excuse was, well, the teacher must have lost it. Which now with Google Classroom, you just click Turn In. You either turned it in or you didn't. And so what we have found in the anecdotal information is that a lot more stuff is getting turned in. Because kids know they can't play mom and dad against teacher or teacher against mom and dad. They either turned it in or they didn't. The other part of this is, you know, through Google Classroom, there's also revision history. So you can see when a student worked on something, how long they worked on it, how many changes they made. So for example, for a writing piece, you know, if it was a student like myself, I would have told my mom and dad that I worked hours on it when the revision history shows I spent like seven minutes on it. And so it, what it has done is it has, it has enabled the kids to know that that accountability is on them, and they have really risen to the occasion. So we have seen homework completion increase in just the overall organization. So instead of now, you know, working on organizing a locker or an assignment notebook, now we're working on how do we teach kids how to organize our Google Drive so that they can keep better track. But as far as homework completion and turning in assignments and not losing things, particularly at the middle level, which we know is a challenge, they've done, done really well, and the teachers have really commented that they have seen an increase in that kind of level of responsibility.
And along with that, we haven't heard anyone say that my dog ate my Chromebook.
Yet.
Other things have happened to them, but...
Got to have that growth mindset.
So it's a great segue to the next slide. We just wanted to give kids the chance to kind of give us feedback in terms of what their perception or, you know, their reporting. And the slide speaks for itself. We expected the taking tests and quizzes to be very high because almost all of our kids took the PRC assessment on their Chromebooks at the middle school level. And just as a side note, numerous teachers and administrators have talked about the gain in instructional time. Because while it worked well, we relegated ourselves to having computers on carts at a three-to-one ratio where there was an incredible amount of setup time and moving the carts around and plugging those and then charging them. The schools did a great job, just as an example, reminding the kids to charge them. Kids pull them out, they're right there, goes in the kiosk, well, they do that, whatever. So, you know, just kind of a side benefit. But all these speak for themselves, and this is not to say that these are all the areas that we want kids to be working with. With all the great curriculum work and digital adoptions, you know, I, you know, Al and all the folks on the instructional side are doing, it's really cool to see that with every step of this, we're getting closer to, you know, like more, more coding in the curriculum and, you know, personalized learning and whatnot. But we were very encouraged by this, particularly the very last question. So we created a like, we created a scale where one and presumably two would be negative, five and presumably four would be positive, three would be neutral. We ask a big-picture question. And, you know, Al and I were both middle school principals, as you were, Mike, and we're sometimes dealing with an age where you ask a question and you get, I don't know, or what, or, you know, some adolescent kind of, kind of, you know, not really affirmative responses. So we were encouraged by the results of this and the participation, and we think that this data could help us in terms of our growth and moving ahead.
CNN, I just, a question relating back to when you were talking about previously, you know, having just minimal machines that people, that students would use. Are the, are the batteries in the Chromebooks, do they, are they eight-hour or are they?
That's, that's a great question. When we, when we went to look at devices a few years ago for the one-to-one, one of the criteria at the time was that there was a minimum battery life to get through the school day. And fortunately, and helping inform us making the shift, as costs came down, the battery technology has improved. And a matter of fact, some of the Chromebooks, you know, depending on the amount of use, will go for a few days. So we rely on the kids, you know, it's one of the things you teach them. Now, one thing we're watching, as you know from your own personal experiences with your phones or computers, as we move through year two and year three, that battery effectiveness goes down. And, you know, the price point Chromebooks we're using, you can't pop out a battery and replace it. But all indications in our research and of talking, talking to others, we're feeling really comfortable that through that three-year period that most of them, you know, are going to meet that expectation. So it's been a non-issue. The norming in this process is getting the kids sometimes to charge those. And I think that's gotten better throughout the year. Al, would you agree?
I will speak to it as a parent. In their agreement, you know, because my daughter was seventh grade last year, so in their agreement, they have to agree that every night they will plug that laptop in and they'll bring it to school the next day charged. I will say as a parent, it was, it got to be a habit of one of those things I always remember before bed, hey, did I see my daughter's Chromebook plugged in in the kitchen? You know? And if not, I just plug it in really quick. You know, so I think, I think as, as parents do, we kind of, but, but for the most part, I would say ninety-five percent of the time, they were, they, she would always do it. She would always remember before she went to bed, okay, what do I have the next day? I need to make sure this is done. You know, so it just becomes part of their routine. It was pretty impressive, actually, yeah.
Thank you, Mike. So this next slide, you know, just, just to note that we're exploring ways to have all our kids be able to keep the devices over summer. There are celebrations and challenges with that, talking to different districts about those, and if we do move ahead, we want to have a good plan, a good accountability plan and whatnot. But we are talking about that and...
So this year, they did not, the middle schools did not keep?
They did not. They were collected. There was a process whereby kids that were participating in a program or did not have access to technology at home were able to make a request through their principal. We also worked with Dr. Lee with some special programming at the high school, you know, to help support some kids that were involved in some special programming. And that process worked well, yet we know with what's coming and what we want to teach kids and how we want them to extend their learning, that there could be some, some benefits. But we also want to make sure that we're protecting our resources and making sure there and doing this balance. So we're talking with different districts to see, you know, what successes and challenges they had and what could possibly work for us. But I wanted to mention that because that's different than what we said in our original plan.
And I like, I can see both sides of it. I like the idea because my daughter was kind of sad when she had to turn her Chromebook in because she said, hey, I've taken really good care of this thing, and now who knows whose beat-up Chromebook I'm going to get the next year. But I will say, I understand from a technology standpoint, you want to protect your resources. If you have to do, I mean, most, most updates you can push out now, right? So that's not really an issue.
Right.
But if there is something you wanted to do in-house, I get that, too, and it's just safer. But there is that thing that kids have, it's, it's, you know, mine, I want to keep it and hang on to it and everything else, especially if I took good care of it, type of thing.
Well, and we do want to note, we've worked with the buildings and it's been, you know, a little challenging to do logistically, but the buildings are working to issue the same Chromebook to returning seventh and eighth graders, just because we want them to feel that ownership whenever possible. That's not going to be feasible in every single case and within coming sixth grade, obviously, but to that point. So as we, as we move ahead, we just wanted to note that we are talking about that. Also, I'm going to turn this over to Al to, I've had, I've had the opportunity to do a fair amount of parent visits and whatnot, but Al has gone way beyond, I think, what we've ever envisioned with community appearances and different things. So I, we'd like to take a minute to highlight that. And also, Board Member Donahue asked an excellent question about some of the different partnerships. And a call that we started to Naperville about some checkout hotspots has evolved so deeply and profoundly, and Al's done outstanding work. So we just would like to take a couple brief moments and talk a little bit about that, if that's okay.
Well, there, and you can see some of the, the efforts that we've had, you know, starting with the middle school pilot of parent-focused groups and speaking at IPPC and the PTAs and just, you know, different types of electronic communications. And we'll continue to do those, you know. We met with all the elementary principals today, and we're rolling out high school. And so continued parent education is going to be a key component to this. One of the partnerships, though, that we're really excited about are partnerships with both the Aurora and Naperville Public Library. So starting last year, you know, Stan and I met with, with the group to look at, you know, what can we do in our community for kids that don't have, you know, Wi-Fi? And so both, both libraries have designated hotspots for kids to rent, you know, for a period of time. They differ a little bit depending upon which side of town you're on. They differ a little bit, depending upon which side of town you're on. Um, but it, you know, we even furthered that when Naperville, for example, rented out their hotspots or made it known. I think everybody in Naperville went to get one. Um, and so we.
Parents were checking them out.
Parents, yeah.
Parents were checking them out.
So we worked with them to have, I think they have forty-two designated hotspots just for students. So you need a student ID to get a hotspot, um, which was really part of what, you know, our goal was with that. Um, the Yola branch had been doing it and continues to do it and look at, looking at purchasing more. So that was kind of our first step with our, our partnership with them. And then last year, over the summer, as we knew we were gonna roll out at the middle school, um, we partnered with the libraries to do Google Apps for Education Parent PD. Um, and so the, but we also know that many of our kids use the public libraries and that the libraries need to kinda know this Google kind of culture and the Google app. So we did PD for the library staffs at both buildings. And then also we had, we partnered with the librarians and they delivered the PD on Google Classroom to our parents while we were there to support and do Q and A. And then most recently, over the summer here, just last week, we had, um, three different classes that we offered, um, both at Aurora and Naperville. Um, and they were digital citizen, digital safety for the twenty-first century student. Um, again, I, I delivered the session, but Naperville and Aurora hosted, um, and promoted within their co- their own library community. And then, um, we did at Aurora, Yola Branch, we did, my student has a device, now what? Um, and so these were some of the, the opportunities that we've had to partner with them, um, to just know that, you know, to your point earlier, Mr. Razak, about it takes a village. Um, we know that because most of our villages use the library from time to time, that they, they are a crucial part of this. So, you know, we're gonna continue to focus on parent PD both through the school, but also through the libraries and the community. Um, so that we can really help parents understand, particularly as we move to the elementary for the next part of this, um, and how to support their kids and, and how we can support parents, so.
There was an article, um, Sue Baker did in, in The Sun over the summer. She called us and was asking us about different questions about our plans for the fall. And as we were talking, um, you know, he said, you know, you might wanna call one of our parents, there's a couple of our parents getting their perspective. Um, and she, um, thought maybe that was a little challenging, you know, with, with the, uh, summer. But, um, we said, well, maybe we can, you know, connect you with, you know, maybe a parent leader. So, um, we were fortunate that we were able to connect, Sue was able to connect with a member of our IPPC who has kids at a couple levels. And, um, you know, uh, it was really nice because in that, um, article, as we were talking about in next iteration, it kinda took some of that parent perception, uh, and parent experience, um, which is very important for us to, to be aware of. And I'll tell you, you know, I've been, um, at a number of IPPC meetings as a principal and, um, you know, in this role. And the level of engagement and the depth of the questions from that group, uh, when we present, uh, i- is outstanding. And Dr. Sullivan has, I know on numerous occasions, kinda talked with the PTA presidents about what's coming. So we're gonna continue that, but we also recognize from our experiences that, um, the questions that third grade parents are gonna ask are probably gonna be a little different than the questions that seventh grade parents may ask. So, um, we're mindful of that and, um, we're talking with Laura Johnson about, um, putting together some talking points and resources for the principals and so forth. Um, so we feel good about this piece, but we know that we need to continue this because for us, this is becoming more familiar. But for a large number of our elementary parents, unless they had kids, you know, in middle school, this is gonna be new to them and work with that. Okay, Andrew?
So, to support the rollout of the Chromebooks, we initiated with the collaboration with the tech, um, services and instructional tech. We rolled out student tech squads. We had about two hundred students across the seven buildings who worked together. And we had them, the initial part was to provide support with the Chromebooks and give help when a kid couldn't log in or turn on the Chromebook or wasn't sure if it's connected to the Wi-Fi. And over the year, that transitioned and we met with them a second time and found out they were feeling like, well, what's our purpose? So Stan gave a great analogy that sometimes businesses go through that same thing and they have to reinvent themselves. And we had a great conversation at all the buildings about how do you, how are we gonna reinvent ourselves and keep that support going? We had some great ideas and the students decided that maybe they need to be more towards application focus and supporting through different means in the buildings rather than just the Chromebooks. They were excited thinking about the sixth graders coming and realizing they wouldn't have had the Chromebooks in elementary school. And how could they support when they came in at the beginning of the school year or new students coming in? So they kinda took that initial excitement of the Chromebooks and helping that way and thought about, well, we still wanna be a part of that, that excitement we tapped into. And they wanted to keep going, so it was neat to transition them. This year, with the high schools coming on, we're gonna take that same concept and it's gonna look a little different. The high schools are gonna have a location in the LMC and students are gonna man that location in their flex time at lunch hours or other optional times they have where students can come drop in for help. And hopefully over time, we're gonna have those students be able to work with our tech, uh, tech support staff and maybe develop a little more skills and actually getting into the devices and doing higher level skills with that. So we're trying to take the skills and excitement the students have and, and support what we're doing with the tech staff. And you see in the graph, they had a lot of interactions, not only with students, but also with teachers and staff members in the building. One of the numbers you don't see up there is they reported, they interacted almost twelve hundred times with different people throughout the year. So they, they had a lot of interactions and they were excited about that. So we're, we're happy to have them as part of that support model that we've got going beyond just our tech staff members.
Yeah, I was really, um, happy to see that. I guess I didn't realize not having kids in the school to, um, you know, witness this personally. I, I just think that's a great strategy and something that gives these kids not only something, um, you know, to help other students with, but also a possibility of a career in the future. And almost, you know, every business has some kind of IT group supporting them, so I just love that, I was thrilled.
Well, Andrew and, um, um, some members of Al's team have done a great job of putting together an interdisciplinary curriculum. And as Andrew alluded to, that was really focused on the little tips and tricks that people might have, like if they don't log out or they think they did and connecting headphones or whatnot. But by second semester, they, the kids did such a great job with those things and the teachers and students became more familiar. And as Andrew said, they were feeling lost and, um, the, um, it was really great. A matter of fact, the picture, the photo on the lower left-hand side of the screen is white, a white, white paper session. It was during a PD Wednesday time when all the staff were in sessions. A few of us were over there, um, Principal Cornish was able to drop in for a bit. And the kids were doing a white paper brainstorming session of how they're gonna reinvent, uh, or further evolve the tech squad. So it, it's about the technology and it's about leadership, but it's really cool because it, it, you know, these are sixth, seventh and eighth graders and they're thinking about how they have to change in that context. That in itself is a power for us, right? So it's a lot of fun and.
And they worked through how to be more visible in the school as well as how they're just changing their role too, so they could keep supporting. It was a neat, neat endeavor. We did it at all seven buildings, so it was, and each building has similarities in their concepts, but they also, it was neat to see the uniqueness come out that they saw their roles could be in each building too.
High school tech squads are very, um, you know, they're, they're prolific, they're, they're out there one-on-one programs. Um, we've heard and had to talk to, the chance to talk to folks that have the Chrome Depot and folks that have the Chrome Zone, all in high schools, right? But not so much in middle schools. You know, there are kids at middle school that help out, but really not in a systemic type of, a program that, you know, sets some goals and whatnot, so.
I love the, I'm sorry.
We're proud of the first year and we think we have a lot of, a lot of places we can go with this.
I love the, the percentage breakout, uh, that you see that almost sixty percent students and teachers. So, so you can, I mean, the students only that they helped was thirty-six, but students and teachers, almost sixty percent. I think that's great.
So the Google Classroom that goes across the seven schools so the kids can share, um, there were a number of comments that stood out. Like one boy that kept posting, when's the next meeting, the green's sure gonna be, when's the next meeting, green's gonna be. But there was one student that suggested, um, it, that one of his, there needed to be a PD session for one of his teachers because he noticed. So, Al and I saw each other later that day and we started laughing before we even talked about, but it's just authentic middle school.
Yeah, it's true.
So, anyway. So, um, we're gonna move on just a little bit, just have a few more slides, Brian?
So this just kinda shows our continuing evol- evolution of where we've gone for the last three years, really. Um, staff laptops for all licensed staff. We were, um, a little later in the game with this than some of the other districts, but we wanted to make sure that we have the infrastructure to support it and the staff is ready for it, both within our department and the general staff as a whole. So that initiative's gone very well with very little interruptions and stuff. We're just finishing up the rollout to elementary teachers for the start of the school year. Probably have about fifty percent of them deployed already, about a thousand laptops for elementary and some special ed and some other, um, unique, um, groups within the district. So we'll finish that up this year. And then over on the right, kinda just cause the Chromebooks are where we're at. Uh, three years ago, Chromebooks would not have shown up as a spot on this graph. It may have been one percent, um, that might be generous. So within three years, our fleet for our student devices has transitioned from that traditional Windows Intel-based PC over to a Google Chromebook. And we continue to filter in some iPads here and there. The most recent addition of the iPads has been with Al's group, supporting some of the maker spaces and robotics and stuff and tools. They've rolled out at the elementary level with some maker spaces and some other spots, spots in that. So we continue to, to involve and grow Chromebooks. So this takes into account the ninety-six hundred at the high school this year, on top of the eighty-six hundred at elementary, or middle school last year. And then this graph will really shrink the Pac-Man coming up here with, uh, elementary, uh, plans for next year.
So we'll continue to have PC environments, you know, with our staff laptops and, you know, s- many of our, you know, some of our curricular labs and project leadway and whatnot. And when we, um, came up with the, uh, scheme, you know, the, uh, kinda the, the schema or the financial, you know, plan and such to, um, recommend the forty-dollar fee, you may remember that we looked at this hol- holistically and said, we're always going to need to have some devices in addition to the one-to-one student, um, Chromebooks, variety of things. So, um, um, but as Brian said, you know, we're kinda dominant in environment. And I just wanted to say, Brian, um, I just wanted to send kudos out to Brian. When you see three thousand Chromebooks sitting in a high school or you see, you know, hundreds of staff laptops stacked up in boxes, um, you're reminded of the logistics behind that. Brian leads the team that makes sure that, uh, that stuff gets deployed and, and gets done, and he does a great job, so. Kent?
So my team is kind of the Wizards of Oz, we're behind the curtain and nobody really knows what happens in that back room, but just hopes it all keeps working. So, um, this is kind of outlining some of the big ticket items that we, uh, have in the backend that really make all of our other systems, uh, just per, um, core routing switching, that's some of the big heavy end stuff we have here at, uh, our main office as well as our secondary data center up at Matea. Uh, firewalls, we have also at both data centers, wireless controllers, infrastructure components. That's all stuff to help support those, uh, massive number of access points that we've been deploying over the years. As well as our storage area network, the SAN, that's, um, what we do, a lot of our virtual servers on, our email system, all that stuff sits on it. So we continue to be on a five to seven-year refresh cycle, depending on the components. But, uh, just trying to stay ahead of the curve, but not trying to chunk off any one of these at a, at a big time and trying to parse it out so we don't kill the budget.
Have we, uh, have you guys explored other outsourcing options?
As for the equipment itself or moving services outside?
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just looking at, you know, storage area network and stuff like that. I mean, there happens to be a big place right across from Matea that does stuff like that.
Sure, certainly stuff that we seem that, you know, we want to be able to keep in-house. We've been able to do that, I think, more affordably than trying to be able to get the data housed someplace else and then get good reliable data transport to that source. Um, our data team has started moving some of their systems into hosted resources because they're such high-end systems. They have such a high demand on them that need that reliability there. And there's companies that obviously know how to do it right and do it time and time again. So we, we continue to evaluate every time there's a, a refresh on something like that to see if it makes sense to, to rethink and reposition if need be. But, uh, a lot of that core information on, on file servers and all that kind of bulk, bulk data, it, for now, it still makes sense financially just to keep it in-house.
Yeah, I mean, I just thought it'd ask because I know a lot, the pricing on a lot of that stuff for fail-safe and everything, I mean, it's just come down in price so much.
If I could, you know, Mark, I think that's an excellent question. Number of years ago, you asked about, you know, external cloud versus internal and, you know, there's a lot of analysis and such, you know, in the tech industry. What's, what's interesting for us is while we still chose, uh, when we did our RFP, our last RFP a few years ago for our storage area network, we did look at some different options. Uh, we knew that there were some things that would still be advantageous for us to keep in. But at the same time, if we were to show you a list of applications to Kent's point, that we have moved to one of the big cloud-type services, there are a number of them. So our overall footprint internally has decreased dramatically, but it's very situational. And I personally think that that's the right, the right way to do the analysis. Because if you just say you're gonna stay internal or you're gonna go into the cloud, there are some things that are not gonna work or you're not gonna have the access or, you know, and so forth to do. So it's very situational, um, but it's a great question. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead to the next one. So here, yeah, access point age, um, as we continue to roll these out, we've had our original iterations of access points that have long since been replaced. And in fact, some of the replacements to those in my time here, we're already working on phasing some of those out again. It's, it's crazy to think how the time has gone. So again, we're trying to keep the, um, age on these from exceeding too far, but also trying to keep it within budgetary limits per fiscal year. Um, the advantage that we're seeing now is that, um, the radios themselves are becoming far more robust to be able to handle more and more clients, which helps us with the, uh, large client density we're seeing in all these classrooms. Uh, but trying to stay ahead of that curve is, is, uh, difficult at times, but that's what we're trying to do by, by parsing this out. That four-year group that was being replaced, um, we're looking at that, that batch that we're replacing right now, which is partially funded through E-rate funding as well. A large number of those throughout the high schools and, and middle schools, as well as some in the elementary buildings that are being replaced as we speak. A couple of my guys on my team are getting pretty tired of turning screwdrivers and, and opening cabinets right now. But also through some vendor support like Advent to be out there re-cabling and, and installing those as well. Uh, these are our local area network switches. This is the switch that, you know, you connect to your end-user device, your laptop still may plug into, your dock plugs into. But, uh, we're trying to parse these so that they're, um, well-spaced as well. The, the thing that a lot of people don't consider is even though we're moving to a more wireless environment for the majority of our portable devices, there's a, a larger number growing every day of devices that are Internet of Things-type devices. Um, our camera systems, we're seeing a, a rapid growth in, in, uh, and, you know, climate control systems, things of that nature that all wanna be able to have access as well. So I'm increasing, increasing switch ports just to be able to support those things when you would normally think, ah, we're, we're moving to wireless, those, those things should be going away. So again, five to seven years, let's just try to keep ahead on those. This shows our bandwidth over time as well. And, uh, I know there was a question too on the, second from the right column, it was a July twenty sixteen, um, thinking, why would we have a higher number there in July? Well, that was actually based on the start of the twenty sixteen-seventeen school year, so sorry for the confusion on that. But the blue line's basically representing, you know, our average utilization, uh, throughout the, the year and what our student and teacher population is using. Orange is our capacity, um, but on the far right, you see there's a gray line now as well. As we migrated some of these systems to being hosted solutions, that requires that we have more bandwidth to be able to do nightly uploads and updates that go to these hosted systems, and that's bulk, massive amounts of data. So you'll see that number is, I, I can't, is it twenty thousand and eighty, I think we have up there, is an overnight-type number that we're churning through large amounts of data overnight that sometimes exceeds what we're doing during the day. But we really need that in the backend to be able to support all the systems that we're hosting now as well.
So we have, we have, um, two providers and, and for those of you that were aboard in March when we did our Online Aurora upgrade, you know, we have two providers, Online Aurora and Comcast. And, um, uh, the Online Aurora piece will be coming up. It's, uh, something we'll be looking at through the E-rate procurement process. The Comcast, um, goes through December of, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, we were very fortunate in terms of our rates. We've been able to add bandwidth in contract. It just ridiculously low rates compared to some neighboring districts. We have that data through some public sites to show that. Uh, Mr. Razak actually found one of those websites, I think last year it was mentioned, you know, maybe in a journal or something and asked me about that. So, um, we're very pleased and, uh, I also wanted to, uh, send kudos out to Kent. Uh, the nature of Kent's job is the alarms literally can go off anytime and alerts and, um, Kent and I have frequent six AM. Kent and I have frequent 6:00 AM calls, right Kent?
Correct.
Just to debrief and strategize on situations. But Kent's done a great job of collaborating and leading his team to do a lot kind of behind that, behind that curtain, so to speak. So that leads us to next steps, and I'm not going to read all these, but I do want to just highlight the recommendation in January to the board on fee increase for elementary. That would follow the pattern that we did the last two years. And basically, just a brief summary, a couple of years ago, we basically threw out to parents in our focus groups some questions. Kathy Pease and Brad Hillman joined Al and I as we talked to some parents, and we were throwing out the question, okay, we're knowing you're excited, we sense excitement, but where is that trigger point, you know? And we took some data, and like, for example, there was a big difference between the level of support for $40 and $117, $75. So we stuck to that $40 trigger point in our last two recommendations, and that has helped inform the type of device we purchased, right? So if we're going to look at touchscreen devices for certain grade levels, they may cost more, and we may have to look at that. But at the same time, we want to do that in a way where what we're assessing to the parents is at the level that they will support and balance those two interests, which is what we did the last two years, and I suspect we'll be doing that again through our dialogue. So we're planning on a similar process to collect the data from the teachers and students, you know, through different means, you know, talk to our parents, and come back to you, and plan to make a recommendation. Why January? Because January allows us to get ready for the registration process and do the ordering and planning and whatnot. And along with that one last point, we have planned this one-to-one initiative to roll this out. So a number, several thousands of the devices that we bought are coming end-of-life within the next year. Okay? So to keep in mind, if we decided not to do the one-to-one at the elementary, which is certainly possible and at the board's discretion, we have to then go back and we have to replace a lot of those devices that are in the shared model, right? So I only make that point that when you take that parent contribution and you consider that you're going to have to replace technology if you're not doing one-to-one, there isn't as big of a delta or big as a gap as people would think there would be in terms of that. And we did analysis of that when we first went to the one-to-one, and we'll be happy to continue to provide more information to that end. It's all tied to that financial piece. But it's a very important piece, because you can make an argument that at some level maybe we wouldn't want to move ahead with something or, you know, but I'm not hearing anyone say that we can continue to move our kids ahead without having adequate technology in some way, shape, or form in the classrooms.
So I have a question. How do we compare with our comparable districts as far as technology?
Sure. Lori, when we did our recommendations, we took the fees at the time of all our comparable districts, and we put that up in a chart along with where everyone was with their one-to-one. And we were pretty much at the time in the middle in both counts. There were some comps with higher fees, but some of those districts were also getting the kids $800 MacBook errors, for example, right? So it's not always easy to compare this district to that district, but in terms of our comparable districts, more were in a one-to-one planning or implementation mode than not, but there were a couple that were not. And again, with the fees, that $40, you know, moved us up a little bit, but when you consider all the fees that school districts are charging, what they're charging for, you know, things, we were not the highest. So, and we still have that data. That data maybe has changed, but we can certainly pull that up if you'd like to see what it was at that time.
Other questions, comments?
For that $40 that goes into our overall, into the overall fees of those for Title I students and things that can't, they're...
Yes. That's a, that's a great question. I did keep a note on here on Slide 6, Ms. Demme. A student shall be eligible for a fee waiver when the student currently lives in a household that meets the same income guidelines with the same limits, based on household size that are using to determine eligibility for the federal free or reduced lights program, and that's an X from Board Policy 4:140. So...
Thank you.
I just wanted you to see that and be on the record, because it's important that we reference the policy.
Justin thinks you do.
Thank you so much.
That answer your question.
Other comments?
Here's something I, maybe food for thought for the future, because I love these technology updates. Now that we've had a year kind of with middle school under our belt, and all the things we learned, especially I think back to the choosing of our science curriculum with NGSS, with our science curriculum team, and choosing it while the kids were already using the Chromebooks. So I guess kind of now what I'd like to see is some understanding and marriage now of how we're going about taking that technology, taking the curriculum, what our teams are learning, how we're putting things into place, how we're putting the apps together, how we're rolling that out with single sign-on and everything else to kind of try to get the whole now big picture, because we've had that experience now with middle school. We're probably about to get into it with high school, and maybe we're already starting, maybe because we've learned so much with middle school and high school, now we're already ahead with elementary school, because we've learned so much with middle school. So I'd like to hear some of that too, because I think that would be really neat to hear what the whole team and how the whole team is working together between technology, curriculum, teaching, and instruction, you know? So I really like to hear that whole now picture that I think we can probably paint really well.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much. Very comprehensive.
Awesome. Thanks. Good job. Go hand out those laptops.
Next, Ms. Peel has led a charge in terms of IASB resolution. She won't be, she won't be confused. She's fine. In terms of our polling place, and has been assisted greatly by Mr. Carubis, who actually did make a presentation to IASB Resolution Committee to consider our proposal that we passed at a prior board meeting. So I'm going to ask Mr. Carubis and perhaps Ms. Peel to give us an update.
Take it away, Mr. Carubis.
Kathy's a great leader because she knows how to delegate.
I'm going to do this.
That's right. So the punchline is our proposed resolution passed, the IASB's Resolution Committee, two Fridays ago. In an effort to get it passed, I prepared a six-page memorandum, summarized the 50 states of law dealing with schools acting as polling places. And there's only like three states that deal with the fee issue. Most states require schools to be polling places. Our resolution kind of acknowledged that schools are going to be polling places, but we wanted to bring in the cost aspect of it so that it would be more taxpayer-friendly if the person making the decision on schools acting as polling places would consider the cost. Going through the process, I went down to Bloomington. The Resolution Committee is a group of people that are elected from all the IASB's divisions across the state. So it's like a 30-person committee with officers. There were a number of different presentations getting put forward, five, six of them. I ended up presenting for about an hour. Yep.
Wow, how did you do that?
Short words. The, there was a lot of good questions. We have a big state, and there's a lot of different diversity of the districts. Everyone does it a little differently. There's some districts that the school's the only place for polling, you know, within a 50-mile radius. There's some districts that, upon learning our costs, you know, were against it, whatever proposal was, because just of the straight costs incurred. Then there was the typical arguments on, you know, closing, why don't you just close for the school day? The counter to that being, you know, we might have three elections in a school year, and the inconvenience and the impracticality of it, beginning Tuesday, recommendations from the department, the regional departments of education on what the calendar should be. So the positive is our resolution passed. We're moving on to the next phase, which takes us to the delegate assembly at the tri-conference in November. Our, the resolution passed at a 60-40, 70-30 vote. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't overwhelmingly supported. It, but people understood that what we were trying to do. They asked why Kathy didn't go down and do it, because they're familiar with her in the process. And some of them were asking questions like, weren't you here last year? And, you know, so...
And when I spoke at the, during the delegate assembly, there was that exact disconnect you talked about, right? Because there are districts that, that's the only building for miles around. There are places in the city of Chicago where that's the gathering place, right? I mean, there's a school. So there was a real disconnect of not understanding why we wanted this, even though I tried to paint the safety issue and that type of thing, but I suspect there will still be that misunderstanding, and maybe we just need to firm up our message, or maybe that will be clear in the Resolution Committee's summary. But, you know, I think we will have to firm up the message again so people understand it, because like you said, it wasn't that, you know, it wasn't like a 90-10 or something like that, or...
That's right. It's going to take some serious convincing to get it through. We're going to need to put our best foot forward. We're going to have to anticipate some of those arguments. You know, the argument is, we're not trying to make, get polling places out of schools. We've kind of already realized that that's not a practicality. That pits us against the election authority. But if we can side with taxpayer efficiencies, and our solution recognizes that districts are diverse, you, schools can be, have, be a polling place, not charge anything, and you move on. So it has the flexibility in there. I thought the value was, though, in seeing what other states do, because once you, once you look at the, what other states do, the kind of solution becomes clear. We're not going to win the kick them out, kicks polling places out of schools. Some of the interesting other aspects were, some state laws said the election authority has to consider these factors when deciding on a polling place, ADA accessibility, proximity, and cost. So there was another way to say it, saying that the election authority has to consider these things, and we're just picking one of them right now. So I think, you know, I'm optimistic that we'll end up getting the approval of the delegate assembly, but we're going to have to be well-prepared to get it done.
So last year, did we pass this first subcommittee test, or no, we were stuck in the subcommittee?
Ms. Peel?
We passed it, but it was a very lively debate, and they amended ours quite a bit, and then it didn't pass in the assembly. But it didn't pass by, I mean, it was a huge margin, I can't remember then the number.
I think if we come with a compelling message this time, and people understand actually what we're trying to accomplish, I think they were caught off-guard last year. And I'm going to be honest with you, of the 860 school districts, I think we're lucky if half of those school districts, their delegate representative discusses it with the board. So I think a lot of them actually heard it for the first time that day. So I think now that they've heard it from last year, I think now that we're bringing it back, maybe with some clarification, with some understanding around it, that we're not trying to take these things out of schools, we're just trying to have more flexibility in what works right for a district, I think we might have a shot, so.
Yeah. It was, you left him out.
What was that?
The video. You were videotaped.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know if it'll ever come up again, but after the presentation, IASB staff had me do a video.
On board policy?
Yeah. That's a sleeper. No, the, on the whole process. So I think that, I'm not sure when it'll come up, if they'll throw it on the website or if they'll post it, but afterwards, there was like a five-minute presentation where I was interviewed. What was our resolution? What's the process like? And, you know, kind of, is it fair? Do you like it? Can you improve it?
Could our check committee have that available for our next meeting for everyone's viewing pleasure?
But I think it's kind of spoke to, I mean, this presentation that Justin had and the way he presented it, and he sent it ahead of time to them. It, yeah, because you are, you're dealing with the whole state, getting people to understand that there's a point of view and coming to some common ground. That's not an easy thing. So I just don't want to understate what Justin did.
Justin made us look like we have our stuff together.
It was pretty impressive, and obviously so impressive, they pulled it on videotape.
Will you do a video?
Kudos, kudos, Justin. Kathy and Justin, what are the suggestions for us as we, you know, consider the due diligence we need to do in order to try and get this approved? What do we, what are your suggestions? What do we need to do?
I think we have some time to ponder that. I mean, we, the meeting isn't until November, so we've got, you know, we just got approval two weeks ago. I think we need to think about how we approach the November delegate assembly, whether it's preparation, whether it's, you know, talking to some of the other people. You know, at the meeting, I didn't anticipate it, but Terry from across the street was very supportive and...
They weren't last year.
Yeah.
But I will say, yes, Terry did speak in favor.
His board did not. And I think they're going to be a lot more supportive of this one. And I, and I, we are hearing from a couple other districts. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's time to ponder, but if you are friends with people from other districts and, you know, you have a chance to bring it up, or they bring it up, this is the time to start having those conversations, and maybe we'll start reaching out to a few that we realize might be hesitant at this point. We do have the, I think there's a pretty good invitation of, from last assembly, who were hesitant.
We will have our fall dinner meeting.
Yes. Luda meetings?
Well, the page division. So we could all network with some other school boards, school board members there as well.
Terry is the legislative chair for our division. It's, so, yeah, and maybe he'll give us some kudos at the dinner, who knows?
Kathy and Justin, if you guys could maybe put together some good, strong talking points, especially for me being a newbie, and Lori might be able to partake as well, would be, might be real beneficial for us, so that we're strong enough to make sure we're making the case.
One page.
Five more.
You could condense it to one page after an hour presentation.
They'll send you a link.
No, it's a great idea. We'll do it.
Thank you, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last Board of Education update, just three brief things. I know many of us have attended legislative meetings that have been held across at least our area by our legislators, talking about the state budget and also talking about Senate Bill 1. I think Karen and Jay pretty much reflected what was going on, which was they expected a Senate override. Wednesday's a little bit uncertain, and on Saturday, we were told really uncertain. So it was nice to hear from Mr. String that maybe there's a shell bill there that will rescue some of that, so that at least there is some educational funding, but I guess that uncertainty was just reinforced. Second, shout-out to Lori Price, who is quoted in the IASB Journal. I forgot to bring my journal, and I was going to ask you to autograph it. And she was quoted... And she was quoted regarding what advice to give to new board members. And several board members from across the state offered their advice. And of course, Lori being that the sage that she is, provided some great advice to new board members and published throughout the state of Illinois. So thanks for doing that. I'll bring my magazine next time.
I actually did have another board member from another district that reached out and just said he liked the advice. Like, okay. So it was, it does...
Thanks, Tucker.
No, it does reach out to other, you know, so if you have that opportunity, because they contacted me to do that. So if you guys get that opportunity, be sure to take it because people are looking at their district and they want to learn from us as well. So take that opportunity to voice your opinions.
Except for me.
Finally, but not last but not least, as over 100 new teachers descend upon our building tomorrow, and then thousands of teachers, teacher assistants, clerical people, support people begin to start the new school year, we want to wish them the best of luck. As a board, please know that as long as we've got the village thing, we do think we're a village. We need to work cooperatively with you in order to provide the best education to students. My own personal charge to the staff is to do this, is to do what we did today. Hopefully, we modeled good behavior. And Karen probably knows what I'm going to say, and that is, look at the mission statement and reflect on that. And look at our guiding principles. Because I think, put simply, District 204 not only tries to educate their students in a very, very great way, well, excellently, but we also try to treat them well. And we know that if we treat our community and treat our students well, that we'll get the results that we desire. But I think it takes some level of reflection in order to do that, just to get yourself reset, recharged. So good luck to everyone. We're looking forward to a great school year, so thanks. And with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Yes.
Major exit slips.